It's time to wake up. It's time to wake up. At the break of dawn and it's on again, better get ready to climb back on the limb. Come on, man, shake the dust off the moon. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. And if you've been going through any negative phase, well, here's your opportunity for turning the page. Today's a new chapter. Write your line, make it end with the win. Give it all you got. First, you gotta rise like alert in the light, get the dirt from your eyes and work on the pride. It is done, 'cause we ain't even trying to lose. Let's go, man, double hit snooze. It's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick tock. Come on, tick tock, tick. Let's go. Tick tock, tick tock. Come on, tick tock, tick tock. You can't wait around for someone to prove. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive with the vibe energized of the folks who you're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away. Come on, let's get it going, don't make it late. So bring me along and lift your arm high like Georgia wheels get a piece of the pie. Begin it with the step, you'll get in it in the sack. If you're winning like you never did it when you overslept, so right this minute, get right with it. What time is it? It's time to wake up.
Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 18th. This morning, our invocation will be led by Reverend Gwendolyn Webb, pastor of God's People United for a Better World Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor Tate. If she comes in, if not, we'll figure it out. Pastor Webb. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Now, we'll try it again. Good morning. Are we still waiting for someone? Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, most gracious Father, Lord God, we come to you this morning just to say thank you. We're so thankful that you look beyond some of our faults, all of our faults, but constantly seeing to every last one of our needs. Dear heavenly Father, we want to say thank you for just another day's journey, and we're mighty glad about it. We want to say thank you, dear heavenly Father, for the mayor of our city. Dear heavenly Father, continue to crown his head with much wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of you, dear heavenly Father. We thank for this council, dear heavenly Father. Continue to bless and keep all of them safe from all hurt, harm, and danger. Dear heavenly Father, right now, and bless our city. Bless our city in a special way. Bless our children and the families of all of our children. Now, dear heavenly Father, as we can continue to stay on the straight and narrow, for we know only the things that we do for you will last. Now, 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 God. Continue, dear heavenly Father, for we know that we're not all that we should be, we're not all that we could be, Lord God, but we're so thankful that a lot of us are not what we used to be. Now, dear heavenly Father, as we're about to close this prayer, but never closing from your presence, continue to rock us, hold us, lead us and guide us, for it's in your name we pray, in the mighty and majestic name of Jesus. Amen. Legis juste to flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and the gospel will be the end of justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Could we please have a roll call?
Counselor Member Abbott. Counselor Member Clark. Counselor Member Moore. Counselor Member Smithman. Morning. Counselor Member Tate. Good morning. Counselor Member Williams. Counselor Member Woods. Good morning. Counselor President Pro Tem Alexander. Good morning. Counselor President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Counselors, we do not have minutes ready for the November 5th, 2024 through February 11th, 2025 meetings. This time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodson.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the entire council. It's good to see all of you all this morning. Good morning to the public as well. Mr. President and Council, I want to start with a somber note by just simply saying on behalf of the city of Birmingham family, we want to offer our some serious condolences to the loved ones of Mr. Troy Perry, who passed away last week. Mr. Perry served as the city, served the city as a stormwater specialist in the watershed division of planning, engineering, and permits for eight years. We want to send a special acknowledgement to his wife, Mary, who I had a chance to speak with last week. They have a, they have two daughters, and Mr. Perry will be remembered for being an amazing father, for being an amazing husband, and for his unwavering kindness and willingness to help others, and his ability to connect with people from all walks of life. But also just want to take my ti, take the time to acknowledge the PEP department as a team, as a work family, who've been rocked by several untimely passing of team members. Because we also want to send our thoughts as it relates to, just two months ago, they lost Mr. Michael Wade, a senior systems analyst in GIS. And if you were unaware, in July, they lost Mr. Nathan Walts, Waltz, who was an engineering inspector. He literally had only been working for the city a few weeks before passing away in a car accident. And so I just want to take the time, if we can, to just simply pause, not only as we pray for those three families, but the PEP team and just a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. President and Council, also want to take the time to acknowledge Mr. John Harris, who I hope all of you know, who served a long time as not only the North Tittysville, president of North Tittysville, but was also on the Citizens Advisory Board. Unfortunately, he passed away. He will be funeralized. He was funeralized this past Saturday, actually. But we still wanted to take the time to send our sincere condolences to his family and the entire North Tittysville neighborhood. If you were unaware, Mr. Harris literally served our community in leadership for 25 years, and I know not just his family, but the residents of North Tittysville will miss him dearly. Couple of notes. One is the builders and backers, if you're unaware of that. The city of Birmingham and builders and backers announced a strategic partnership to advance innovation and entrepreneurship in our city. The collaboration has opened applications for the Spring 2025 Idea Accelerator Program. And so what this does is offer Birmingham residents the opportunity to transform their innovative ideas into viable enterprises. Selected participants in the Spring 2025 Idea Accelerator will receive up to $5,000 in non-dilutive funding and as well as dedicated assistance from builders plus backers, venture studio team to test and develop their ideas. The program especially welcomes innovations that can strengthen Birmingham's small business ecosystem and create new opportunities in our neighborhoods. Just a note, applications are now open, and they close, they are open through March 11th, but the program's set to begin April 10th. And for more information, we want to encourage residents to go to birminghamal.gov/newsroom for more details. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/newsroom. I want to share with you as we acknowledge, celebrate, and promote Black History Month, the Spider Martin exhibit is now open. As the world reflects on the 60th commemoration of the 1965 Selma to Montgomery march, the city of Birmingham is proud to present a selection of photography captured by a Spider Martin during those tumultuous and historic moments on the Edith Pettus Bridge. The exhibition titled "Two Minute Warning," "Two Minute Warning," is on display on the second floor of City Hall. These images capture the tension, terror, as well as the triumph of that day in Selma. It is our hope that viewers will remember the sacrifice and recognize that the struggle for justice continues. One last note, and it's an important note. Health. I'm not necessarily speaking to public health, I'm speaking about the health of our city employees, not just their health, the, the health of our city employees and their families, their spouses, significant others, and their children. If you were unaware, February is heart health month. Again, February is heart health month, and we want to make sure that everyone is aware that heart disease is the number one killer of both men and women. And so, as mayor, I think it's extremely important that I encourage, promote, advise, talk to, whatever words you want to use, to share that we want our employees to know that, they need to know their cholesterol, we want our employees to know their blood sugar, and we definitely want our employees to know their, about their blood pressure. And so we want our employees to be mindful that we have an employee health clinic, all right? We actually have an employee health clinic that we want, I don't care what department you work for, PEP, Public Works, Fire, Police, the General Services Department, whether it's HR, Legal, Mayor's Office, City Council, and everyone else I did not name. We want our employees not only to be mindful that we have an employee health clinic, we want them to take advantage of the employee health clinic where no copay is required. They can check those numbers I described, they can check their numbers for their cholesterol, their blood sugar, blood pressure, and so many other things for free, all right? Including for their families. And so the Brownstone Be Well Clinic, for those who have interest, for those who want to take advantage, is located at 1700 Fifth Avenue North. Again, the address of the Brownstone Be Well Clinic, intentionally designed for our employees to take advantage of, is 1700 Fifth Avenue North. We encourage you to call 205-202-5650, again, for our employees to call that number, 205-202-5650, and make your appointment today. Make your appointment this week. Make sure you take care of your heart, make sure you take care of your health. And with that, Mr. President and Council, that concludes the mayor's report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Abbott, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Before you get away, I wanted to say that I have used the city Brownstone Clinic on numerous occasions. I give them two thumbs up. They are great. If people aren't taking advantage, they should be, and yes, heart health is very important. Now, I have a suggestion for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to suggest, because I was perusing our newly renovated website last night, looking for things. I didn't find the things I was looking for, but I found that we have a new head of our human resources department, and I thought that it would be a very good idea if when you got new department heads, you bring them to a city council meeting and just introduce them to us and to the city, citizens who are watching, so that we know who our leaders are.
It's a great idea. Let's do that, Chief Sparks. I like your idea. We'll do it.
We're in agreement. That's all.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say thumbs up for the clinic, and let's introduce our new people to us, because I want to recognize them if I bump into them in the hallways.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Mr. Clark, do we have any nominations to boards and agencies? Okay. This time, I'll read our statement on conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Ms. Clark, let's please read through the items on our consent agenda.
Consent agenda starts on page two with items one, two, three, and four. Page three, we have items five and six on consent. Page four, item 11 is on consent. Page five, items 12, 13, 14, and 15 are on consent. Page six, items 16 and 17 are on consent, and we conclude with item number 18 on page 10.
Okay. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? None. We have three items that are on the consent agenda marked for public hearing. Do any members of the public wish to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we are ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Tate. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Consent agenda is approved. Item seven, please.
Okay. Item seven. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement between the city of Birmingham and the offender alumni association, under which the city will transfer title of property located at 1200 Tuscaloosa Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama 35211, to the OAA, at a use value of $10, and a consideration of OAA will undertake a project to reduce or eliminate any future blighting conditions of the property to include, but is not limited to the restoration of the existing roof, repair, and electrical system, replace molded carpet, restore and clean concrete flooring, remove vault doors, and molded ceiling panels. Their cost anticipated to be in excess of $150,000. This is an item of permanent operation. I need UC to pass it today.
I'm over UC.
Counselor Member Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Member Clark.
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman.
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate.
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Member Pro Tem Alexander, I'm sorry. Counselor President O'Quinn.
Aye.
I motion on the item, please. Items before.
Okay. Discussion on this item. Counselor Abbott.
Yes, I wanted to know the assessed value of this property.
Yes, Counselor Abbott requested the assessed value of the property. Counselor Abbott, for item number seven, is requesting the assessed value of 1200 Tuscaloosa Avenue.
So, so because we're talking about potential litigation, I am going to recommend that we go into executive session under 3625A7A3.
Question for executive session.
Counselor Member Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Member Clark.
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman.
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate. Counselor Member Williams. Counselor Member Woods. Counselor Member Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Pro Tem Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor President O'Quinn.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, we'll now go into executive session, and we'll reconvene at the call of the chair. Okay, well, we'll now go into executive session and we'll reconvene at the call of the chair.
Mr. Clerk, we're ready to reconvene in the meeting. Could we please have a roll call?
President.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smitherman. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. President ProTim Alexander. Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say me.
Please have my decision.
Councilmember, give them some stage.
Okay. Item eight, please.
Okay. Item eight. And, um, I'm sorry. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Allen Tutwell Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in the code of section three dash one dash four C, the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation. I need you see first.
I move for you see.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President ProTim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say me.
Please have my decision.
Councilmember, give them some stage.
Okay. Item eight, please.
Okay. Item eight. And, um, I'm sorry. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Alan Tutwell Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in the code of section three dash one dash four C, the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation. I need you see first.
I move for you see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
President ProTim Alexander.
Here.
Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say me. Councilmember, give them some stage.
Okay. Item eight, please.
Okay. Item eight. And, um, I'm sorry. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Alan Tutwell Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in the code of section three dash one dash four C, the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation. I need you see first.
I move for you see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
President ProTim Alexander.
Here.
Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say me. Councilmember, give them some stage.
Okay. Item eight, please.
Okay. Item eight. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Alan Tutwell Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in the code of section three dash one dash four C, the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation. I need you see first.
I move for you see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
President ProTim Alexander.
Here.
Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say me. Councilmember, give them some stage.
Okay. Item eight, please.
Okay. Item eight. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Alan Tutwell Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in the code of section three dash one dash four C, the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation. I need you see first.
I move for you see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
President ProTim Alexander.
Here.
Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say me. Councilmember, give them some stage.
Okay. Item eight, please.
Okay. Item eight. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Alan Tutwell Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in the code of section three dash one dash four C, the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation. I need you see first.
I move for you see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
President ProTim Alexander.
Here.
Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say me. Councilmember, give them some stage.
Okay. Item eight, please.
Okay. Item eight. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Alan Tutwell Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in the code of section three dash one dash four C, the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation. I need you see first.
I move for you see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
President ProTim Alexander.
Here.
Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say me. Councilmember, give them some stage.
Okay. Item eight, please.
Okay. Item eight. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Alan Tutwell Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in the code of section three dash one dash four C, the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation. I need you see first.
I move for you see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
President ProTim Alexander.
Here.
Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say me. Councilmember, give them some stage.
Okay. Item eight, please.
Okay. Item eight. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Alan Tutwell Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in the code of section three dash one dash four C, the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation. I need you see first.
I move for you see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
President ProTim Alexander.
Here.
Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say me. Councilmember, give them some stage.
Okay. Item eight, please.
Okay. Item eight. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Alan Tutwell Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in the code of section three dash one dash four C, the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation. I need you see first.
I move for you see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President ProTim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say me. Councilmember, give them some stage.
Okay. Item eight, please.
Okay. Item eight. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Alan Tutwell Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in the code of section three dash one dash four C, the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation. I need you see first.
I move for you see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
President ProTim Alexander.
Here.
Council President Oakley.
Present. Okay. So we will reconvene Attorney King. Did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, we're ready to reconvene in the meeting. Could we please have a roll call?
President.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smitherman. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. The President of Pro Team Alexander. Council President O'Quinn.
President.
I got you.
Okay, um, so we will reconvene. Attorney King, did you want to clarify?
Yes, for purposes of clarification for executive session, it was two-pronged to discuss potential litigation and negotiations to buy and sell property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion of this issue? All right, we're ready to vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item eight, please.
Okay, item eight, and, um, sorry, seven, eight, that's nine. Item eight, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents to execute a quick claim deed to Alan Tuttwiler Jr. for the sale of property located at five oh two Third Street North, Birmingham, three five two oh four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement lane, lane, liens, I'm sorry, in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Another situation for permanent operation, I need you see, first.
I move for you see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Pro Team Alexander.
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn.
All right.
Motion. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on this item? Council Clark.
This, this item reminds me that, um, we did get a law passed that allows us to actually foreclose on code enforcement liens. And I know Councilor Smitherman and I were involved in a task force, uh, through a grant received from the Centers for Community Progress to come up with a policy for actually using the, the new law. So I'm just reminded, I'm not really sure where we left off and whether there's something like an ordinance that's going to come forward for us to approve.
My understanding is that they were going to come back to us with recommendations as to what that ordinance should look like and the exact, you know, or the circumstances under which the city should consider foreclosure.
Yeah, I know that the consultants concluded their work, but I'd hate for it to just stop there. Maybe we can follow up with committee of the whole or something, just to keep our eyes on the ball and not lose.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Under this circumstance, uh, um, the city attorney's office, um, I believe the property owner has two years to redeem.
That's correct, and the city foreclosed on the property in May of twenty twenty-three.
Okay. All right, any additional discussion? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, item eight passes. Item nine, please.
Item nine has been requested to be withdrawn.
Okay, item nine is withdrawn. Item ten, please.
All right. One second, put that in. Item ten. An ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of, uh, two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents to execute a quick claim deed to Kevin Seals for the sale of property legally described as lot nine, number nine dash A according to the resurvey of lots seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven Cherry Hill. Said resurvey recorded in mapbook fifty-eight, page ninety-one in the appropriate office of Jefferson County, Alabama, and located at sixty-seven twenty-four Exterior Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one two, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Item of permanent operation as well, I need you see. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. Council President Pro Team Alexander.
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn.
Aye.
That motion. All right.
All right, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, item ten is approved. Uh, that concludes our agenda items. We're ready for announcements. Council Woods.
All right, good morning. A few things, want to congratulate the Huffman High School Boys Basketball Team on a Sweet Sixteen run. Uh, they came up short against Gaston City, uh, yesterday, but incredible season, twenty-five wins. And, uh, want to celebrate them for their accomplishments this year. Uh, the monthly Be Litter Free Community Cleanup is this Saturday at East Pennsyl Valley Rec Center. Uh, we'll be meeting at the, the walking track, and we will be, uh, really preparing and cleaning garden beds, cleaning up that area, getting ready for replanting. Uh, the garden has been a, a really good addition to the community. A lot of, uh, seasoned gardeners have been connecting with, um, individuals that are just, say, new to the, uh, idea of gardening. And so there's been a lot of great, uh, coordination, information exchange, and, uh, just community gathering around that. So this Saturday, want to invite everybody out at nine AM if you want to participate in that. And the Huffman Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday, February twenty-fourth at seven PM at Huffman Baptist Church. And so want to invite everybody out to continue, uh, being engaged in your community to make a really impact to help guide the decisions that we're making. So, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Evergreen Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at five PM at the Evergreen Missionary Baptist Church located at two thousand nine twenty-second Avenue North. East Thomas Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six PM, and they meet on Zoom, and you can call the office at two five four twenty-three oh four for those instructions. And Smithfield Estates Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six PM at the Daniel Payne Plaza located at fifteen hundred Daniel Payne Drive. Enslie Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Thursday, February the twentieth, six PM at McElpine Rec Center located at eleven fifteen Avenue F. Drew Hill Neighborhood Meeting will be held on Monday, February the twenty-fourth at six thirty at Protector Stadium located at twenty-one hundred Richard Arrington Junior Boulevard. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, February the twenty-fifth at one PM. Please submit agenda items by email no later than Wednesday, February the nineteenth, and no later than twelve noon to the following recipients: Gregory dot Stanley at Birmingham AL dot gov, and Ashanta dot Cephas at Birmingham AL dot gov. Also, another event to be on the horizon and to look out for is Coffee and Convo Highlights with these Department of Economic Development. So that meeting will be held on February the twenty, nine AM at the Heritage Coffee Center, and that's located in downtown Enslie. Also, Southampton K through A School presents Digital Footprints, Footprints Coating Birmingham Black Legacy, and that's Tuesday, February the twenty-fifth at ten AM at the Library of Innovation. And that's all my announcements, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Tate. Council Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development Tourism is canceled due to lack of submissions. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March the fourth, in Conference Rooms D and E. If you'll have all your submissions into India Bailey by the end of the day on the twenty-seventh, we would appreciate it. Crestwood South will be meeting Monday, the twenty-fourth, at six thirty at the Jewish Community Center. And Crestline will be meeting the twenty-seventh at six PM at its regular spot, Hope Community Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Williams. Pro Team Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are our announcements for District Seven. We have two neighborhood meetings occurring in D seven this week. The Green Acres Community will meet tonight at, uh, six thirty PM. On Thursday, the Hillman and Hillman Park Neighborhoods, they meet jointly at five PM at Hopewell Baptist Church. We want to congratulate the Boys and Girls Basketball Team at Winona High School. They've moved into the Elite Eight. They will be playing on February nineteenth, that's tomorrow, at Jacksonville State. The Girls will play at nine AM. The Boys will play at ten thirty. Councilor Smitherman will be playing Ramsey, and, uh, the Boys will be playing Hayden. We're asking all alumni, fans, and, uh, parents, students, everybody that can attend, and, uh, will be wearing camouflage. Thank you. Those are my announcements.
Thank you, Councilor, um, Councilor Smitherman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pro Team, are y'all going to war or something? Play on the side.
We're just going in for a little battle, that's all.
No, no, it is, it's awesome. Um, congratulations to Winona, but we're Ramsey High School boys, they fell short, they lost by two points. Um, but, you know, Coach Johnson, I think he had his two-hundredth win a couple of weeks ago, so that's pretty awesome for him. Uh, the next Budget Finance Meeting will meet on Monday, February twenty-fourth, at three thirty PM in the council chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Um, our West End Library will have, well, it's past ten o'clock now, but they will host live at the library on tomorrow at noon, and then also at West End Library on Thursday. They will have chair aerobics at ten AM. And then West End Library will also have, uh, offer services for tax preparation from nine to two, uh, daily as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Council Rabbit.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning and Zoning Committee meeting scheduled for February twenty-sixth at three thirty PM in the council chambers. Looks like it will actually occur this time. The Neighborhood Association meetings tonight, we have Five Point South Neighborhood in the Social Hall at Highlands United Methodist Church. And next Monday, we have Crestwood South Neighborhood at the Jew, Levite Jewish Community Center on Montclair Road. I'm still high on three-one-one and the My Beham three-one-one app. You can take photos, you can write your own description exactly the way you want it to be worded, and that's a great thing. And then later on, when you've forgotten your number, you can go back and put that address in, and it will show you all the open tickets that have been turned in on that, that location. So, um, it might only say that it was assigned to PEP, but at least that gives you a starting place. Um, and once again, we're asking all residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website for all the additional information that we don't have time to tell you right now in our announcements. And that is www.bhamdistrictthree.com. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. The South Woodline Neighborhood Association will have their meeting tonight at six PM. Uh, the Ponos Vista Neighborhood Association will take place, uh, this Thursday at six PM via Zoom. Uh, the East Birmingham Neighborhood Association, uh, will take place this Monday at six PM at the Shield Center. And the Kingston Neighborhood Association will take place this Mon- Monday at six PM at the Royal Events Center. We'll also have the Community Development Committee meeting today at two PM in council chambers. Uh, and Park and Recreation, Recreation Board meeting will take place tomorrow at nine AM at Legion Field. Uh, we're also, uh, taking applications for the Stormwater Appeals Board. Um, your application can be sent to, uh, dfourinfo@BirminghamAL.gov. Uh, want to make sure that I read off a little bit of the information about the board. Uh, this is a five-member board. Each member shall be a resident of the city of Birmingham who has recognized interest in the stormwater management. Um, one board member must be an environmental eight engineer or scientist. One must be an environmentalist or a conservationist. Uh, one must be a neighborhood or community leader, a retired utility, uh, business worker, and then an at-large citizen or resident of the city of Birmingham. There is no compensation for this position, uh, and this board shall meet at least six times a year, uh, on a bi-monthly basis, uh, and such special meetings as the chair may find necessary. Um, so again, if you are interested in serving on that board, uh, please email dfourinfo@BirminghamAL.gov. Um, I do want to send my condolences to, uh, Mr. Troy Perry and his family. Um, he was actually the person who I was, you know, working with to, uh, get this board back field. Um, so it definitely came as a, as a shock, uh, of his untimely transition. Um, and last but not least, I wanted to, you know, offer up, uh, a resolution of sympathy, uh, for Ms., I'm sorry. Wanted to offer up a resolution of sympathy for Ms. Andretta Marie Jackson Willis, um, who was a longtime Airport Hills community member, um, and recently, you know, had her celebration of life this past Saturday. Um, and so my, my hearts and prayers go out to, um, her family as well. So, thank you.
So.
I'm sorry, uh, move, I move for you see.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmore, Council Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. District Eight and Arts and Culture related announcements. We've got, um, the Graymont Neighborhood Meeting tomorrow at four thirty PM in the Smithville Library. There are no other Neighborhood Association meetings in District Eight this week. Uh, you can join the Birmingham Public Library for the latest installation of Loud at the library. That's taking place tonight at six PM. Uh, it's a collaboration with the Birmingham Arts Alliance, and will feature trombonist Jacob Elkin. Also, the History and Future of Jazz collides on Saturday, February twenty-second. The Alabama Jazz Hall of Fame invites you to an evening of exceptional jazz at the Carver Theater featuring the dynamic young drummer Timothy Huffman alongside elder statesman of jazz, Jose Carr. Doors open at six PM, the music begins promptly at seven. You can visit jazzhall.com for more information. Also, uh, jazz-related, uh, the Birmingham City Schools has been selected as, as one of only eight school districts nationwide to host the prestigious peer-to-peer Jazz Informants Tour presented by the Herbie Hancock Institute of Jazz. There will be two public performances in Birmingham on next Thursday, February twenty-seventh. The first is a ten thirty AM school-wide student assembly at A H Parker High School. And the second, uh, event that same evening, uh, will be a jazz jam session, um, with students and professionals sponsored by the Birmingham City Council. That's at the Carver Theater at seven PM. So you can visit jazzhall.com for more information. And, you know, I think it's interesting that Parker is having the coincidence of winning the championship and having, uh, other distinctions happen in its hundred-twenty-fifth year. So it is a pioneering institution, not just for Birmingham, but for the state of Alabama. So really proud of Parker and the longevity and the rich history there. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Uh, for District Five, we have three Neighborhood, Neighborhood Association meetings this week. Central City Neighborhood Association meets tonight at six PM at the Birmingham's, uh, Central Library. South Side Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday at six PM at the South Precinct. North Avondale Neighborhood Association will also meet on Thursday at six PM at the MLK Rec Center. Uh, the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting will take place on Monday, February twenty-fourth at two PM here in the council chambers. If you have items to be submitted, please get those to Kimberly Phillips, uh, uh, in my office um, by contacting her at Kimberly dot Phillips at BirminghamAL.gov. Um, if you're looking for an opportunity to serve the community, there are several ways to do that. Um, first and foremost, um, we need lifeguards. I know we're facing sub-freezing temperatures later this week, um, but we're thinking about our swimming pools. Um, and, um, so if, if you're interested, uh, and, and we'll, you don't have to be a certified lifeguard. We'll, you know, the city will help you with, uh, getting certified. Please contact Terry Sewell at two oh five two five four two one eight nine, or two oh five two five four twenty-three ninety-one. Councilmore and, um, Chief Mitchell probably also needs some assessment of, um, our various swimming pool facilities around the city. Um, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, having har- hiring lifeguards to staff those pools, but I think there's probably also some maintenance issues, um, that we probably need to be aware of. So, um, if we could get some assessment, uh, I know I've heard from some of my neighborhoods about, you know, pools that haven't been opened in the last several years, and, you know, what it, they're curious as to what it would take to get those open. So, um, also, uh, the next Academy of Civic Engagement class begins in March. ACE is a seven-week program designed to give residents an in-depth, behind-the-scenes look at how our city government operates. You can apply at BirminghamAL.gov backslash ACE. And Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service is preparing for its upcoming Community Emergency Response Team class this spring and is currently seeking volunteers. CERT training includes disaster preparedness, disaster fire suppression, basic medical, basic disaster medical operations, and light search and rescue. You can register via email at pubed@BirminghamAL.gov, or by calling two five four six five six zero. The, we have a event, uh, coming up called, um, it, that's being led by the Kingdom Builder Company. They will be hosting a Hundred Men Praying on Saturday, March first, at nine AM at Batwell Auditorium. For additional information, please contact Tavarus Cook at two oh five nine two two nine five six zero or six five nine eight nine five four five five eight. And finally, District Five, the District Five team will be hosting its annual District Five Planning Meeting on Saturday, March first, at nine thirty AM at Jones Valley Teaching Farm. We invite District Five residents to join us. Please contact my office at two five four two six seven nine two RSVP. Okay, Mr. Clerk, we have a couple of, uh, speakers signed up. You have three minutes. The time will be displayed on the monitors behind us.
Okay, uh, Paul Godby at eight twenty-one, Twenty-third Street South. I'm president of South Side Neighbor Association. Um, I just want to speak about the, um, short-term rentals because I've been concerned about this. And I finished my proposal for the classification system. It took me quite some It took me quite some time to do because I had to do a lot of checking on my own. I've also talked with several short-term rental owners, and they liked this particular plan. And I've sent my early copy both to Councilor O'Quinn and Councilor Smitherman and to Kim Spirit, but I'll be tweaking up and adding some few things and getting the rest of this to you at a later date. I just didn't know exactly where it was in the process yet because I hadn't seen it come up as a public hearing, uh, yet, so that's all. Thank you.
Right. I believe that's on the agenda for the next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting next Wednesday.
Yes, on the twenty-sixth of this month.
Right, it won't be a public hearing.
But it will not be a public hearing.
Right.
The public hearing will come before the city council.
Toya Morrow. Ms. Morrow.
Good morning.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I live in the new South Town, uh, public housing, new development.
Please state your name and address.
My address is nine thirty-three Twenty-Third Street South, and it's in the new South Town development. So I just have some, a couple of concerns I need to, um, bring to y'all attention. So basically, I just wanted to say that, um, we need more police patrol officers, uh, in that area, um, on the inside of the building and the outside. And, um, my next concern is, um, there are a lot of stray dogs that's running loose over in that area, so they need to be taken care of. And, um, basically, you know, I just wanted to run that by y'all attention and everything. Also, um, um, there are a lot of people that's parking over in the development that, that, they don't live in that area, but they'll just come over there and park their cars, and I don't know where they be going, and this basically be on the weekends. It don't be through the week. It bas, it's basically when the rent office is closed up, so, uh, I just wanted to bring that to y'all attention, and so that's, that's all of my concerns that I have for today. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Clark.
I just want to say hello to Ms. Toya, and thank you for coming down to let us know what's going on.
Hey, and it's a pleasure to see you as well, and I hadn't seen you in a long time, so I'm glad to be able to see you, and I would like to speak with you a few minutes out there. Everything is over with.
Okay.
And I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to see everybody.
Thank you.
God bless you all.
Thank you. All right. Want to recognize our officers on duty this morning. We have Officer Pinkert, Officer Langford, and Officer Lawrence. Um, thank you for being here with us. And, um, that, I think, brings us to our final motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Me and adjourn.